I'd like to call this main meeting of the Board of Education to order. First on our agenda tonight is the adoption of the agenda. Ms. Devos, second is Taylor. Tonight for our opening devotion, many of you know I am a former school teacher. So I'm going to reference a children's book called Thank You, Mr. Father. And I'm going to tell you the story through another story. So a long time ago, in a very small town surrounded by whispering hinds, lived a little girl named Lily. From time to time, she was enchanted and loved books. She loved their covers, she loved their pictures, she even loved the smell of books. But reading them, that was something different. The words danced on the page. Letters flipped upside down, no matter how hard she tried, Lily couldn't make sense of them. Her classmates zipped through stories while she stumbled through the same sentence again and again. Whispers began to follow her down the hall. "She's dumb," they'd say. "She's lazy." Even Lily began to believe them. That all changed in fifth grade when Mr. Harris became her teacher. He noticed things like how Lily's eyes would fill with frustration when she was asked to read aloud, or how she'd linger near the bookshelf but never take a book home. One afternoon after class ended, he asked her gently to stay behind him. "Lily," he said, pulling a chair beside her, "I don't think you're lazy. I don't think you're dumb either. I think you're brilliant, and I think you just learn differently." Day after day, Mr. Harris worked with Lily after school. They clapped out syllables, they traced letters with their fingers, they read stories one slow, steady word at a time. He never raised his voice, never gave up, even when Lily did. "You'll get it," he'd say. "You're growing, just like a seed. Sunflowers take longer to bloom, but when they do, they're unforgettable." Weeks turned into months, and one spring afternoon, something changed. Lily opened a book and read a paragraph slowly, carefully, all by herself. When she looked up at Mr. Harris, he had tears in his eyes. "You did it," he said. "You bloomed." Years later, Lily returned to that little school, but this time not as a student, but as a teacher. She decorated her classroom with bright colors, filled the shelves with books, and paid extra attention to the kids who sat quietly in the back, the ones whose eyes didn't light up when she read a story aloud. She remembered how one teacher had changed her life, and now it was her turn. Because that's what great teachers do. They see what others miss. They believe when others doubt, and they light a path with a rose star. And every year, when one of her students felt like giving up, she'd kneel beside them and smile gently and say, "You're a good seed, full of potential." Sometimes, it just takes the right care and patience to bloom. So during Teacher Appreciation Week, Lily would always write a note to her favorite teacher, Mr. Harris, and simply say, "Thank you for seeing me when I couldn't see myself. Because of you, I blossomed into who I was meant to be." Every teacher has many Lily stories, and hopefully, every Lily has many Mr. Harris stories. So you yourself must be an example by doing good works of every kind. Let everything you do reflect the integrity and seriousness of your teaching. So I challenge each of you in this room tonight to write a note, text a teacher, and back there. Now we will have our pledge allegiance of the flag of the United States of America, and I call on four students from Candor Elementary. We have Alejandro, Pedro, Cortizo, and Mike. I will come forward, please. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is public comment. With no one signing up to speak, we'll move on to recognitions. And the first recognition tonight is the religious state for Miss Amagene Sofia Snodgrass. Whereas our heavenly father in his infinite love and wisdom saw fit to call home Amagene Sofia Snodgrass on January 20th, 2025, and whereas her dedication to Montgomery County schools for 36 years as a teacher was a living testament of our integrity and skill, and whereas her loss will be deeply felt not only by those with whom she served, but also throughout her entire community and county. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Education goes on record in expressing a sense of real loss and regret in her passing, and that a copy of this resolution be conveyed to her family as an indication of our deep sympathy, and that a copy of the same be filed as part of the permanent minutes of the Board of Education. (Inaudible) And such a sweet, lovely thing here. In all of those 36 years, she was a secondary teacher. And Lily, and Highland, and then to Mount Hill.
One thing she used to tell me was that she had a choice between Armon School Sister and Montgomery. She chose Montgomery, and she'd never regret it.
Sweetest life. Sweetest life. Thank y'all so much.
And here we have her niece, Dr. Chandra Snodgrass. She's a teacher in Charles Maryngin.
Yeah, nice to meet you. Thank y'all so much.
Daniel Smirringen and his wife Candy Smirringen.
It's so nice of y'all to come. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, thank you. (Laughter) I'll make this so hard on me. And now... Oh, me. This one will be tough, too. And now the family of Georgia Bonus Adams. (Inaudible) Wonderful. Thank you so much. (Inaudible) Oh, me. And I know the board's probably tired of me giving personal stories, but when I taught in Stanley County and then I interviewed to come to Montgomery County to teach, I interviewed Dr. Adams, and we were just best buddies forever. So, Montgomery County Board of Education Resolution of Esteem for Georgia Bonus Adams. Whereas our heavenly father in his infinite love and wisdom saw fit to call home Georgia Bonus Adams on February 23rd, 2023, and whereas her dedication to Montgomery County schools for 23 years, ending her career as an assistant superintendent of curriculum, were a living testament to her integrity and skill, and whereas her loss will be deeply felt not only by those with whom she served, but also throughout her entire community and county. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Education goes on record in expressing a sense of real loss and regret in her passing, that a copy of this resolution be conveyed to her family as an indication of our deep sympathy, and that a copy of the same be filed as a part of the permanent minutes of the Board of Education. Thank you so much. She loved this system, and she loved the people in it. She sure did. And after she retired, she kept tutoring and... She worked more after she did. And I taught for Montgomery County Schools with my son, teaching for Montgomery County Schools. My brother taught for Montgomery County Schools, and I was a speech counselor just from Montgomery County Schools. That's right. I remember. (Inaudible) I believe now. (Laughter) Y'all have a great evening. Have a great evening. (Inaudible) Recognitions, Candor Elementary, and Mr. Allman and Mr. Matthews.
So we're going to do our staff members of the month, and Candor is our school for this month. So if I could get Ms. Effie Arsis to come forward. Ms. Arsis was selected as the certified staff member of the month for Candor, and I'll ask Mr. Matthews to say a few words about this young lady.
Well, first off, I'm going to say one thing. Effie's an inspiration. She's an international teacher, and I'll say one thing, I think it was wrong, she is not eligible to be a representative or Teacher of the Year, and she deserves this honor. I cannot tell you how inspirational coming from the Philippines before your journey, being with us here in Montgomery County, being an amazing ELA teacher. Fourth grade, you're going to see in my presentation later tonight, is leading the charge in AR points. Right, brushing it. A part of that is because of who Effie is and relationships that she builds with her students and the care she puts into it. She is a valued member of Candor Elementary. Very, very...
Congratulations.
(Applause) Three, two, one. Thank you.
Did we go differently in our class? Yes.
And our classified staff member of the month is Ms. Crystal Sessoms.
So it is my pleasure to have Ms. Sessoms here with us. Ms. Sessoms is a teacher assistant in Ms. Little's kindergarten Penguins class, and just one of the best classrooms you're ever going to be in. Ms. Sessoms and Ms. Little are an unbelievable team that reach in their kindergarten suits their potential, but also, she's one of the best bus drivers I've ever seen. She never misses, and when I ask her to step up, maybe we need coverage in a pre-K classroom, she's in there. When I ask her, I need assistance to drive our after-school program, which runs five days a week with transportation every single day, Ms. Sessoms said, "Let me take Monday and Tuesday, and I'll provide support there." So morning, afternoon route, and then another evening route, in addition to be a fantastic TA. Ultimate team player at Candor Elementary, ultimate teacher assistant at our school, Ms. Crystal Sessoms. Good job.
(Applause) Three, two, one. Perfect. Congratulations.
All right, so our next recognitions are our winners for our Math Olympics competition. We've been doing Math Olympics at the Early College for 34 years now. So if we can, if Ms. Julia Dawn will come forward, she was our first place winner from West Middle. And there's Mr. O'Blenner, if you'll come up here as well. Congratulations. Congratulations. Several of those winners was Ms. Lydia Patton, also from West Middle. Congratulations. And our third place winner from Main Street is Ms. Riley Parker.
Congratulations. Good job. Do you want us in a picture?
I want it.
Park. Congratulations. (Applause)
So our next set of recognitions is our Skills USA competition winners. If I could get Mr. Swain to come up and help me with this. You've got two firefighting here. He's not here. Is it just Hunter? Hunter's not here. Okay. All right, so our firefighting winners, they were all working, is what I was told, so they're not here tonight. We did have two woodworking winners, Mr. Kern and Mr. Swain. If y'all will come up, we will recognize these two individuals. So in third place in the state, we had Mr. Trey Meyer.
Three, two, one. Good job.
And in fifth place, oh, I'm sorry. Did you get a picture, Jay? Okay. And in fifth place in the state, we have Mr. Carson Christ.
Three, two, one. Perfect. Great, great, great.
And we have one more winner. We had a state champion in HBAC, Mr. Richard Steen.
HBAC is actually one of our Career College Promise classes through the Community College. So he did all that work at the Community College, but because of his grade level, competed as a secondary student. So that's our partnership there that we can brag on, so.
Three, two, one. Great. (Applause) Thank you to Ms. Gerger to bring it home every time it's very exciting.
Good job, Richard. Congratulations. Good job, Mr. Steen. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Good evening, y'all. Chairman Evans, the school board, appreciate your time tonight. One thing I'm really excited this year at Candor Elementary School, I know you guys came last Thursday and you got a walk-in tour, but I wanted to talk about our theme this year, and our theme was an open book of endless opportunities. I wonder things I decided to do with our presentation, just to kind of highlight all the positives that have taken place at Candor. So the mission as Candor is to build lifelong learners, leaders, and champions. And so that's one of the things that we kind of focus every day with our school motto. And when we flip over, one thing I wanted to look at, 24 licensed educators, their teacher effectiveness, I want to look at that and focus on that 100%. Last year at Candor Elementary School in our EVOS data, 100% of the teachers on staff met growth. That is a big deal when we're trying to move this report, to move it up in this report card. And we'll talk about that later today, but that means in K-5, everybody met growth, maybe not all exceeded, but met growth, which means what the state is asking us to do. We have 1% one national board teacher, 74% are experienced teachers, and 25% are beginning. One number that I did not have mentioned in there, though, is we have a strong international group of teachers on our campus. Ms. Arsis was one of that contingent. We have Ms. Arsis, Ms. Valden, Ms. Fisher Roberts, and we also have Ms. Almanzor. We have four teachers on the third through fifth grade hallways that are all international. Three are from the Philippines, and one is from Jamaica. And they have had a major impact at Candor Elementary over the last four years, helping to fill a void where we cannot recruit and retain local educators, to be honest with you. And they come in highly qualified, and they don't miss. One of the things I appreciate is their diligence to the job. A little bit more about our family. 375 students, roughly 358 of those are K-5. The other portion of that is pre-K. We had two pre-K classrooms there. I want to look at a chart of our growth. One thing that excites me when I came to Candor, I went back and looked at historical data, since COVID, Candor has historically met growth every year. They are considered a low-performing school, which is a D rated. However, their growth, especially during post-COVID, it has been 84.2 in growth. To come out of low performing, you need to hit 85. They have knocked on the door within percentage points twice in the two out of the last three years. So these are some things, they're in a trend upward, and I'm hopeful that by the end of this year, we're going to hit that 85 mark and come out of low performing, when you see some of the trend things we put in. 84% free and reduced lunch. We are a school of high poverty. Our kids come from high poverty situations, that's what our reality is, and we'll talk about some of those services that we're moving forward. A goal of ours this year on the next slide, AR. Let's go back one. Celebrated reader has been, has really taken off at Candor Elementary School. I really want to pay tribute to this, to Ms. Thompson, our instructional facilitator. She cannot be with us tonight. Sharon, right now, is going through some cancer treatments, being a trooper, but has really led this. And I want to focus, our school goal on words read is 60 million. We're right now at 52 million. Actually, that number will update after this week, but if you look through, even through kindergarten through fifth grade, we're getting high participation with AR tests, books being read. And notice at fourth grade, 35 million words. I can attribute that to Ms. Effie Arsis, who was recognized tonight, just a leader in getting kids to independently read and find joy. One thing in this process that I love is that when kids come in to check out books, they're looking for books at their Lexile level. When I was an English teacher, when I asked a child, "What's your level?" Mr. Matthews, "I got to be between 700 and 800." There we go. They're not just coming in checking out Diary of a Wimpy Kid, the same book over and over. They're checking out things to challenge them to grow them in their reading. All right? Million-word readers, and I just wanted to focus these. These are all our million. Andrew Salazar is our first guy to the left. Then we have Marco Alvarez, right next one coming over. We have Mariana Sanchez Gonzalez. Then we have Christian Tolatino on the top right. Rodrigo Perez down on the bottom left, he's at 2 million words. Okay? Josue Benitez, next one down. Jalen Riza, and then Landon White. Now, one person, we didn't get his picture up here, Roger Pratt. I'm really disappointed, we lost Roger to Ashford City Schools two days ago, was sitting at 2.5 million words. So all of the fourth graders, this has been a big push for us at our school, and here's the joy, they love seeing their numbers being moved, I can imagine. All right? Now, the next thing I'm really proud of that I want to talk about this year is High-Impact Tutors. Now, I've been in the business a long time. I've never been able to hire part-time tutors the way we've been able to this year. We have been gifted, something falling from the sky in some ways. Ms. Lee Wright, Ms. Carrie Fisk, and Ms. Marie Marlowe, if you notice, they all have asterisks by their names because they are certified North Carolina teachers. Ms. Lee Wright and Ms. Fisk are both retired North Carolina educators. Ms. Marie Marlowe wanted to dip her toes back into education. I had an opportunity, said, "Come dip your toes into it here at Candor," and she did. And then we have, hopefully, a future teacher in Ms. Jasmine Harris that we'll be able to have. So we have two groups of tutors here. We have our NC EdCor tutors, which are, I think, provided by our Ellis Grant, funded through that. We've had them since the fall, and they provide strong support in ELA. They're helping to improve reading fluency and overall comprehension skills. Ms. Lee Wright serves grades four through five. She pulls small group every day. Ms. Jasmine Harris pulls grades two through three, and so she's pulling that small group in there as well every day. All right? In February, actually, no, I hired them in January, we hired Ms. Fisk and Ms. Marlowe to come in and be math tutors. They are pulling small group in math every day. Ms. Marlowe's pulling grades two through three, and then Ms. Fisk is pulling grades four through five. We're serving a total of 100 boys and 95 girls through our total, which is 195 students, which is 58% of our overall student body, getting additional High-Impact Tutors. They do get pulled some during their core instruction, but that enables our core teachers to also pull small group in math. So they're looking forward to it, and we're hoping to see really big gains, and they're helping to close all the skills. As we head into EOG prep, they're pushing through on those EOG skills right now, too. I'm hoping we have all of them coming back. Clubs, groups, and activities, this is another thing, we talked about opportunities that typically, I'm used to seeing a lot of groups at secondary level. We look at, you know, score skills, everything. I'm really impressed with what we're able to offer for all students at elementary level. Math and STEM Olympics, that was sponsored this year by Ms. Caitlin Singleton, one of my fourth grade teachers. Found the books, that was Ms. Saunders. We have our flag team, who actually, tonight, did the pledge, and I'm really excited. That was actually Mr. Cole Bennett, who was here sitting on the edge with them. She's our communities and schools student support specialist, sponsored by the Ellis Grant. She's full-time with us. She coordinated getting the high school to come down and train our flag team, so they put the flag up and down, and folded properly every single day. So it was a nice, unifying thing, and they were excited to be here tonight. A little nervous, but... Another group we have is the Leaders of the Pack. This is a group that we work with with Ms. Bennett, Deb Sykes, our guidance counselor, and a sponsor from Eckerd Connect out of Candor. This is a group of our second, third grade boys that just have an opportunity to help tighten some behavioral skills, and it's not just behavior, it's also to enrich. We have some other kids that are above grade level in that group to kind of grow them in their leadership skills. Girls on the Run was led by Urelia Oliver Leon this year, a product of the hometown program. She's a TA that's finishing that this year, and been on our campus the last two years. Probably one of my favorite events to watch the girls at Star Elementary participate in that tremendous success. Communities and Schools, again, also sponsors our morning announcements. I love hearing a variety of age groups do the pledge and read announcements every day at our school and take the adult horse out if the kid was present. Students of the Month, that is sponsored by Montgomery Insurance, another local group. He sponsors that, and we actually recognize our kids this morning. We also have an All-Star Club. This was partnered with Ms. Clarrette before she transferred over to West Middle to support. She got in touch with Alicia Chambers and Mr. Earl Lee, and they came over to help pull the All-Star Club. We saw a need with some of our fourth and fifth grade boys, and so we've been working with that every third Thursday of every month. In addition to the Gap Girls that Ms. Clarrette had going on, which is another after-school group, and the girls participate in for leadership development. And then our other group that we have here is the Pokemon Club. Now, I'm going to tell you, I don't know a lot about Pokemon, but the kids at Candor do. And that Mr. Templeton sponsors that, and it is great for creative, for problem solving, for building connections, and building those things. So one of the things I do like about is that we have an opportunity for everybody to be a part of something on our campus. That's one of the things. The other thing, kind of our last thing I want to hit on tonight, we have had an after-school program serving 109-plus students Monday through Friday, 3 to 5, with bus transportation and a snack every day after school. This has been sponsored by the Ellis Grant from the year. It's been something that, and we also serve in pre-K through fifth, so one of the other things here is we don't have just kindergarten students, we've got four-year-olds in this program, too. But this has helped to provide a major assist to the families in Candor, giving them guaranteed after-school supervision of their children, but also giving them guaranteed transportation home every day. And I have to praise all the bus drivers on our staff for running not only one route in the morning, a route in the afternoon, but picking up the slack and running these routes, because we've run two routes, and it's really just been a positive thing. It's a lot to manage, but it is a positive thing for the school. And so in doing that tonight, I wanted you guys to see that Candor really offers an endless open book of opportunities for everybody. Another thing that's not highlighted, but I want to highlight it, is we have a memorandum of agreement with Montgomery Community College, and we have two adult classes taking place on our campus. We have an adult ESL class that meets on Monday and Wednesdays, and we also have on Tuesdays and Thursdays a GED skills class that is being taught. So Candor really is a hub for the Candor community. That's my presentation tonight, and I thank you for your time. Good job.
(Applause) Maybe I'm down to run one more. We have Mr. Allman.
So board members, there is a proclamation in your packet. This is National Teacher Appreciation Week. I'm not going to read the proclamation to you guys, but just know that this is something that we would like for you guys to approve, to put in the permanent minutes, recognizing National Teacher Appreciation Week as May 5th through 9th in Montgomery County Schools.
Girls on the Run was led by Ureli Oliver Leon this year, a product of the Hometown Program. She's the TA that's finishing that this year, and been on our campus the last two years. Probably one of my favorite events to watch the girls at Star Elementary participate in, tremendous success. Communities and Schools, again, also sponsors our morning announcements. I love hearing a variety of age groups do the pledge and read announcements every day at our school and take the adult ones out for the kids who are present. Students of the Month, that is sponsored by Montgomery Insurance, another local group. He sponsors that, and we actually recognize our kids this morning. We also have an All-Star Club. This was partnered with Ms. Chlorette before she transferred over to West Middle to support. She got in touch with Alicia Chambers and Mr. Earl Lee, and they came over to help pull the All-Star Club. We saw a need with some of our fourth and fifth-grade boys, and so we've been working with that every third Thursday of every month. In addition to the Gap Girls that Ms. Chlorette had going on, which is another after-school group, and the girls participate in for leadership development. And then our other group that we have here is the Pokemon Club. Now, I'm going to tell you, I don't know a lot about Pokemon, but the kids at Candor do. And that Mr. Templeton sponsors that, and it is great for creative, for problem solving, for building connections, and building those things. So one of the things I do like about is that we have an opportunity for everybody to be a part of something on our campus. That's one of the things. The other thing, I want to, kind of our last thing I want to hit on tonight, we have had an after-school program serving one hundred and nine-plus students, Monday through Friday, three to five, with bus transportation and a snack every day after school. This has been sponsored by the Ellis Grant from the year. It's been something that, and we also are serving pre-K through fifth, so one of the other things here is we don't have just kindergarten students, we've got four-year-olds in this program, too. But this has helped to provide a major assist to the families in Candor, giving them guaranteed after-school supervision of their children, but also giving them guaranteed transportation home every day. And I have to praise all the bus drivers on our staff for running not only one route in the morning, a route in the afternoon, but picking up the slack and running these routes, because we've run two routes, and it's really just been a positive thing. It's a lot to manage, but it is a positive thing for the school. And so in doing that tonight, I wanted you guys to see that Candor really offers an endless open book of opportunities for everybody. Another thing that's not highlighted, but I want to highlight it, is we have a memorandum of agreement with Montgomery Community College, and we have two adult classes taking place on our, we have an adult ESL class that meets on Monday and Wednesdays, and we also have on Tuesdays and Thursdays a GED skills class that is being taught. So Candor really is a hub for the Candor community. So that's my presentation tonight, and I thank you for your time.
Great job. Thank you.
Moving on down to round number two, we have Mr. Ollman.
So board members, there is a proclamation in your packet. This is National Teacher Appreciation Week. I'm not going to read the proclamation to you guys, but just know that this is something that we would like for you guys to approve, to put in the permanent minutes, recognizing National Teacher Appreciation Week as May 5th through 9th in Montgomery County Schools.
Mr. Dozier, is it second on paper?
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on down to Dr. Shaw, round number five.
Looks a little lippy, doesn't it? So good evening, board members. There are numerous policies up for first read. These policies represent the School Board Association's recommendations, and they represent changes aligned with the new Title IX regulations and other required changes. So again, just to summarize, there are two reasons why we have so many. One, as members of the School Board Association, we get the updates that they recommend, we talked about that last, what, about two months ago. They do two huge overhauls, one in April and another one in September. So this is the huge overhaul that they do bi-yearly. So all of the new updates that they have combed over are included in here, as well as the new Title IX regulations. If you remember back in August, we changed the Title IX regulations from what they were to the administration we were under then, to align and stay in compliance. Well, now that we're under a new president, we have to have them back because he changed a lot of the wording and the different regulations that are associated with Title IX. So we're going back to how it was before we voted in August and September, well, I believe it was first read in August, second read for the vote in September. So we're going back to how it was prior to that vote. So nothing new in terms of what we've done, we just were one way, we changed, and now we're back the other way. So these are up for first read, and I'll be glad to answer any questions about these policies, and we'll just need action next month. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks again, too, for giving us a synopsis.
Yes. Oh, I can talk any news. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to round number six, Mr. Ollman.
I'll be brief tonight, as you've already heard through the proclamation, and then also Ms. Evans' devotion this morning, or this evening, I'm sorry. This is Teacher Appreciation Week, so as we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week, I just want to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude to our dedicated educators who serve the students and families in Montgomery County. As you saw in Mr. Matthews' presentation from Candor and the previous presentations from our other schools, our teachers are the heart of our schools. They show up each day, demonstrate passion, resilience, and an unwavering commitment to our students. In every classroom and hallway in our buildings, our teachers inspire learning, nurture growth, and build the foundation for a stronger future. They adapt, lead, and go above and beyond to ensure that every child feels seen, valued, and empowered. Their work often extends far beyond the school day, and yet they show up every morning ready to give their best. And then to our teachers, I just want to say thank you. Your work matters, and it does not go unnoticed. Our community is stronger because of you, and we are very fortunate to have such talented, dedicated professionals leading our classrooms and educating our students.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I need a motion going to close session. Mr. Dozier, second is all in favor.
Any a motion to add to tonight's agenda?
Oh. We're back in other sessions. We did that in the earlier day. Yeah, that's okay. We need, I need a motion to add to the agenda to have a vote for hiring a new superintendent.
Will you make that motion?
I say. Okay. Ms. Dozier's made the motion to add to the agenda to hire, to have a vote for hiring a new superintendent. Ms. Taylor seconded, all in favor.
I just want to say something.
This is just a motion to.
Add it to the agenda.
Add it to the agenda. Okay, no problem.
All right. So, all in favor? Next, do I have a motion?
That's going to the consent.
Yeah. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda. Mr. Blake, Mr. Dozier, all in favor? All right, thank you. Now, the motion about hiring the new superintendent.
I just want to say we had some good candidates in house, in our house, for this position.
Is this the motion to? You didn't name them. No, I don't. Oh. I thought, he was just.
I'm just making a statement.
He was just putting in a statement.
Right. I'd like to offer a motion that we hire, that we employ Dr. Karen Roseborough based on contract negotiations, if I can obtain a second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to hire Dr. Karen Roseborough by Ms. Smith, second, Ms. Taylor, and I'll call for a vote, show of hands, in favor.
And then I just want to go on record as saying, I am not voting against her at all, but I am voting against the way the contract is, because it does not, in my opinion, protect us, because we can be on the hook for up to three hundred thousand dollars.
Any more discussion? Okay, we have a motion, second, and we voted, and the motion passed.
Just to address Mr. Dozier's concern, there was conversation on that, and we did receive legal counsel. We feel that there are some things in that contract that does protect us, so.
And I.
I know, we each have our opinions.
I disagree with that.
So we just want to make sure that we don't think that.
I want a copy of it. It's public record.
Had been signed yet.
Had been signed.
Let me get it.
I'm going with it Wednesday, so.
What, I thought you didn't sign it tonight, did you?
Well, we got this, another signature.
Oh, a hard signature.
Yep. And they got to approve it, the form as well.
Is there anything else? I would like to make a statement. I don't know if I can do it. I would just like to say that I feel like the employees of Montgomery County Schools, specifically Dr. Shaw and Mr. Ollman, have worked so hard these last several months to keep our school system afloat, protected, and moving forward. And I would be remiss if I did not thank them wholeheartedly for the hard work they have done, and I hope for the hard work they will continue to do for the children of Montgomery County Schools.
Your view.
I say amen to that.
And I have full confidence that we will be moving forward in a positive light to help Dr. Roseborough, and I just, I cannot, I cannot thank you guys enough for the hard work you've done. And with that.
Need a motion.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Seven.
Second. All in favor? All right.